All right. I think we're gonna get our Thursday meeting started right now. And Madam Clerk, if you could begin us with the roll call.
Councilmember Baines, Councilmember Brand, Councilmember Capriolio, Councilmember Olivier, Councilmember Quintero, Councilmember Jean, and Council President Brandal.
Here. And we're gonna start our morning off with an invocation from one of our very own department heads, Mr. Scott Mosier. And then stand, and we'll salute the flag when Scott is done praying.
Good morning. It's a privilege to be before you, Council President, Councilmembers, in a different capacity. Please join me in prayer. Lord God, we thank you for this morning. We are thankful for this day that you have made. We thank you for the opportunities and challenges that you've set before us. God, I thank you for the call that you've placed upon these leaders, for the inspiration and passion to serve you and serve this community that you've placed in their hearts and minds. Thank you for the vision. Thank you for this city, for people of rich diversity from all over the world who you've called together to be a community here. Thank you, God, for this valley which you fashion that produces crops and abundance to feed this nation and even the world around us. Thank you, God, for the ways that you guide us and for your faithful promises. As you say in your word, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your own understanding. In all your ways submit to him, and he will make your paths straight. Do not be wise in your own eyes; fear the Lord and shun evil. This will bring health to your body and nourishment to your bones." And so today, we pray for wisdom for this body, for our city councilmembers as they make decisions for this city of a half million people. We pray for our mayor, for her leadership and her vision. We pray for our city manager and leaders in departments and leaders from around the community. We pray for wisdom. Pray your blessing upon this meeting and, God, for all the things that you desire to do today. We pray for the drought. God, that you would send rain, send snow, restore us. We pray for the economy, just for jobs and meaningful work for those in our community. Pray for wholeness and for the redeeming transformation of our city. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
And we have several ceremonial presentations this morning, including one big one. But before we get to the Pride Awards, we are gonna have a presentation from Talia with SPCA, and I get to come up and meet a little cat, I think. I'll be right there. What's this cat's name?
Hi, good morning, guys. So I'm from Central California, SPCA. The little buddy that I brought with me today, his name is Dexter. So he's like a domestic short-haired cat. He's about a little bit over three months. And so he came to us as a stray. Nobody reclaimed him, looking for him. Yes, certainly. There you go. There, you can help me out. And so he needs a home. So if you guys are interested in adopting just like him, we have many more at the SPCA that you guys can adopt. We're also gonna be at the Fresno Fair. We're gonna be there every day of the fair with our mobile adoption trailer. So if you guys wanna know when to get in on when it's really cheap, then I can let you know. Yes, he's a cutie, or he's a cutie, I'm sorry. So that's little Dexter. So again, if you guys are interested, you guys can visit our website. All our animals that are available for adoption are there. As well, if you lost an animal, for example, like this little kitty, his picture was on the website, but for some reason, an owner didn't come looking for him. So again, that's definitely, the website's a great resource to find out adoptable animals or lost animals and things like that. Also, if you guys are interested, and if you guys are teachers, educators, and you're interested in booking a dog safety presentation for your students, we do dog safety classes. You can just give us a call at 233-SPCA, and we can certainly book a dog safety. Awesome. Yeah, so that's little Dexter right there. So if you guys are interested, let us know. Okay, let me help you. Yeah. Okay. So that's Dexter. All right. So yeah, well, thank you for inviting us. And then I wanted to thank Mr. Quintero because he invited us to the Muscati Community Center. We were there on Saturday. We were able to educate a lot of people. They were very much interested in like low-cost pain neater, low-cost microchips, vaccinations, all that. So that was a great area to be at, so thank you for inviting us. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And thank you, Talia. And thanks for everything that you guys do to help our community and process and work and get pets placed in homes. So we appreciate it. And Francine, what about Dexter for you? Right on. Well, thank you very much. We'll see you next time.
Good morning, council. Good morning, everybody. October is Disability Awareness Month, and I want to first introduce Dr. Pitt from our Disability Advisory Council. The City of Fresno established this committee back in 2008, and I'm proud to say it's actually evolved from what we used to call our ADA Advisory Committee. We had two committees, one that dealt with public transportation and one dealt with accessibility issues at that time, like curb cuts, which were back in the early 2000s, a unique and new way of providing access to the entire community. And the City of Fresno should take great pride in the achievements and how we, as a community and an organization, have recognized the importance of providing access to the entire community. The ADA Advisory Committee actually started back in the 80s, when a lot of transit systems back at that time had to start dealing with things such called wheelchair lifts on buses. And a lot of transit agencies at that time decided to start welding or basically making those systems inoperative. Fresno decided that that was not the path we were gonna go down and took great pride and effort to try to replace the fleet and make sure that access was available to the community, whether it's on public transportation or on our sidewalks. That work continues to today, and we are here to celebrate the work of the committee and the community and what we have done to improve accessibility for those with disabilities because they too want to participate, contribute, and have available to them all the same things everybody has as far as accessibility. So let's give the committee a round of applause for all their work. And Doctor, a few words.
I'm gonna step to the podium if everyone does not mind. Okay, so good morning again, everyone. My name is Dr. Janelle Pitt, and I serve as Chair of the City of Fresno's Disability Advisory Commission. And the theme of this year's National Disability Employment Awareness Month is Expect, Employ, Empower. This month, I am reminded of the importance of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which is one of the most comprehensive pieces of civil rights legislation for individuals with disabilities. I'm particularly reminded of Title I of the ADA, which focuses on barring discrimination in the area of employment, which is such an essential aspect of many people's quality of life. When you think about the importance of work and how it translates to those around you, it doesn't only represent a paycheck, but signifies identity and empowerment, a means of connecting and contributing. The U.S. Chamber of Commerce has endorsed the goal of increasing the number of individuals with disabilities in the workforce from 5 million to 6 million by the year 2015. It is clear that full inclusion of all people matters. The National What Can You Do campaign emphasizes to us the opportunity to become involved in that goal. So our charge as we move throughout this month and the rest of the year is to ask ourselves, within our own sphere of influence, what can we do? What level of impact can we have where we all work, live, and play that can cause a rippling effect of change? If we really carry within us the belief that our community is truly enriched by the talents, skills, and relationships that people with disabilities bring, I think answering the question, "What can we do?", moves us to a place of desire and action, remembering it's what people can do that matters. Each year, the City of Fresno Disability Advisory Commission recognizes individuals and organizations that have indeed improved the quality of life for individuals with disabilities in Fresno. The recipients of the Sixth Annual Achievement Awards have already begun to answer the question, "What can we do?". This year's individual award recipient is Jamie De La Serra. If you can come forward, please. And Jamie is being recognized for her advocacy and for development of new programs and services that improve the quality of life for individuals with disabilities. She is the founder and director of the Diamond Learning Center, which is an organization with the mission of fostering lifelong learning that enables a person with developmental disabilities to maximize independence and lead productive and fulfilling lives. Her nomination statement read, "For her, this is a calling, not just a job or career. This is where her heart lies." This year's organization award recipient is presented to Valley Caregivers Resource Centers' Oasis Adult Day Program. The award is being received by David Reed, Oasis Program Manager, and the organization was nominated by Kathy Id. The organization is being recognized for customer service that is above and beyond the standard and innovation that has a positive impact on persons with disabilities. Oasis is a social day program that provides stimulating, recreational, and therapeutic activities for seniors, including individuals with Alzheimer's. The nomination statement read, "They truly lead by example for other Alzheimer's programs." Thank you. Lastly, this year's City of Fresno Staff Department Award is presented to Captain Randy Wright, Firefighter Specialist Jay Tracy, and Firefighter Specialist James Contreras. If you could come forward, please. This team here is being nominated by Chief Kerry Donnis. Deputy Chief Simonis, excuse me, will be in attendance on behalf of Chief Donnis. This amazing crew is being recognized for going above and beyond the call of duty. The crew actually responded to a medical emergency in their district where an individual who resides at a home who utilizes a wheelchair and a walker had no ramp. While off-duty, Captain Wright, Firefighter Specialist Jay Tracy, and Firefighter Specialist James Contreras purchased the necessary supplies and built a home at that residence. The nomination statement read, "This sort of thoughtfulness and compassion exemplifies the mission of the Fresno Fire Department, to protect and put service above all else." Thank you.
Whereas every year since 1945, the President of the United States has proclaimed a national observance in October to promote the employment of individuals with disabilities. And whereas 17% of residents in the City of Fresno and 50% of residents over the age of 65 have one or more disabilities. And whereas attitudinal barriers can hinder people with disabilities and from being fully integrated into the community life. And whereas the City of Fresno recognizes that people with disabilities are a community resource which should not be overlooked or underutilized. And whereas the City of Fresno Disability Advisory Commission serves the citizens of Fresno by providing the city with a guidance on a wide range of disability-related issues and through its annual achievement awards, recognizes an individual and an organization who have improved the quality of life for persons with disabilities in the City of Fresno. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swearingen and the Fresno City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 to be Disability Awareness Month in the City of Fresno.
All right, Bruce, stay right there. I'm gonna join you, and we're gonna start with our Pride Award ceremony.
Took me a minute to figure this out. Well, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Employee of the Quarter Awards for Outstanding Employees. And the special thing about this is that they have been recommended for this award not by their supervisors, but by their peers. Getting noticed by your supervisor is one thing, but when your peers see what you're doing, that's a whole 'nother story, and it's really, really fantastic. So we've got several people here from different departments who have achieved this award, and we're gonna get started with the City Attorney's Office. The employee who's being recognized is Susan Silva. Susan joined the City Attorney's Office as a legal assistant in August 2007 after working in the private sector as a paralegal. Words cannot adequately express Susan's steadfastness and professionalism. She is currently the only legal assistant in the office responsible for assisting six litigation attorneys preparing cases for trial. Susan handles an extremely busy and deadline-driven workload, and no matter how demanding her work entails, she maintains a professional calm and positive attitude. We especially value her ability to transition between her various duties and assignments without missing a beat. Susan is extremely deserving of this recognition, and we are delighted to recognize her as our Employee of the Quarter. Congratulations. Next, from the City Clerks, City Managers, and Mayor and Council Departments, we would like to recognize Lindsey Barcini. Yay! Lindsey is very helpful with other district requests from staff. She is friendly and has a positive spirit. District Two is a busy district in Fresno when it comes to constituent services. Lindsey oversees this work and personally acts as a liaison between concerned citizens, businesspeople, and city departments. She has never dropped the ball in her commitment to resolving people's problems in a quick and efficient manner. Working for President Brandal, Lindsey keeps busy, and she ensures that Steve Brandal is kept updated at all times. Communication is a key factor in her job, and Lindsey does a fantastic job in making sure nothing falls through the cracks. Uh-oh. Todd, microphone? You're in trouble.
Look, she's really nervous. I just wanna say in front of everybody that I appreciate Lindsey and everything that she does. I'm a hard guy to kinda take care of, as you can see from this morning, cat crawling all over me. But she does a wonderful job with District Two, keeping my schedule correct and online, and then also keeping up with the agenda for me, helping me with that. But more importantly than that is taking care of the constituents in northwest Fresno, so I really appreciate her for that. So let's give her a round of applause.
Next, we'd like to recognize some employees from the Public Utilities Department, and like to start off with Beth Lanier. Beth Lanier has been selected as Employee of the Fall Quarter. Beth is one of those clerks who assists in training new clerks. Her knowledge of utility building and her excellent customer service skills are extremely impressive. When dealing with customers, call after call on a daily basis, she goes the extra mile in explaining everything they need, including additional information or options available to them. She is always very calm, cool, and collected in dealing with all customers, even irate customers. Every customer is treated with respect. Customers appreciate her attitude regardless of the situation, and we are proud to have her on our team. Congratulations, Beth. Next, from the Public Utilities Department is Rod Barnett, I'm sorry, Rod Barnett. Rod has helped in equipping of a water crew with his time and experience. He has 26 years with the City of Fresno, with 16 years in water production. Rod takes an excellent care of one-third of the city's mechanical issues on the wellheads. Rod shares his experience with his peers. When a tough situation comes up with mechanical issues, Rod is the man we call. He is reliable with his knowledge and dependable with his help. We are very glad to have this kind of knowledge and experience in the Water Department and honored to have him as part of our production crew. Congratulations, Rod. Next, we'd like to honor Beatrice Garrison. How do we describe this person? She has done everything from driving a solid waste vehicle to preparing accident reports, to training drivers on safety issues, to training employees on operating a forklift. This says a lot about her, and that is exactly what she does a lot. As the supervisor states, she has displayed a tireless work ethic that gives new meaning to the words "commitment of excellence". This past quarter, Beatrice has fulfilled three different positions in the division. She has been an acting supervisor, dispatch backup, as well as her regular position as safety officer. And she performs all of these duties with a high quality of professionalism. We are honored to have Beatrice presented as a solid waste employee of the Fall Quarter. And finally, out of the Public Utilities Department is David Trager, a senior laboratory David leads the day-to-day work at the Water Management Division, state-certified environmental laboratory. David's nomination recognizes his attention to detail while working on a project to determine the performance of a set of equipment recently installed at the wastewater reclamation facility. He pointed out the need for additional testing not specified on the original scope that was critical for the determination of optimal performance of the new equipment. Not having this data could have provided the project matter with inconclusive data and have potentially exceeded the project, adding cost and additional time. For this, he deserves to be recognized as Employee of the Quarter. Now, we're gonna move on to the DOM Department and recognize Erica Castanada. Erica has been with the Housing and Community Development Division for over eight years. Erica is an essential member of our department. Her attention to detail, positive attitude, and work ethic exemplify the qualities of an outstanding employee, a model for others in the department. The optimistic outlook and proactive approach she employs when dealing with various responsibility encourage other employees in their daily work activities. Over the past few years, Erica has taken on additional duties. One of the best things about Erica is her positive outlook and attitude, making her such a pleasure to work with. Congratulations, Erica, for being selected DOM Employee of the Quarter. We're gonna move on to the Fire Department and start with Colby Johns. I think I saw you on TV last night. Firefighter Colby Johns has been a member of the Fresno Fire Department since October 2005. Colby accepted the role as the department's Public Information Officer in 2012. Colby is constantly looking for opportunities to enhance public awareness of firefighters, fire safety, and department. Additionally, Colby has developed the department's new app. This Fresno Fire app allows citizens to hear our fire calls, identify fire stations, and provides quick first aid and CPR chips on any Android or iPhone. Colby is planning on returning to the field soon, and he will be missed as the department's PIO. Thank you for your great work. Congratulations. Staying with the Fire Department, we'd like to recognize Greg Skaggs. Fire Captain Training Officer Skaggs has been a member of the Fresno Fire Department since June 1995. Greg is currently assigned to headquarters as the Fire Department's Emergency Medical Services Liaison. He also assists with mitigation efforts at emergency events and volunteers to take on any ancillary tasks to reduce the duties of the incident commander. He exhibits many qualities essential to today's modern fire arena. He leads by example, and his enthusiasm and dedication are both inspiring and motivating. Always pleasant and smiling, Greg's efforts have created a more satisfied and productive team throughout our organization. Congratulations. And last but not least, from the Fire Department is William Vega. Fire Captain William Vega has been a member of the Fresno Fire Department since November 1996. He is currently assigned to Station 11. Will volunteered for a project that included research and evaluation of a new product for fueling the department's small-engine equipment, such as chainsaw and portable power equipment. He was also responsible for the resulting modification to several department policies. A secondary outcome was to recommend the rotation of some of this equipment between apparatus to ensure all equipment was used and maintained equally. On the fire ground, he is calm, cool, he's a calm, cool manager and effective under stressful situations. Will provides terrific leadership while supporting the objectives of the department. Congratulations. Moving on to the Information Services Department, we'd like to recognize Kenneth Wilson. Ken Wilson's work has been a key element in the success of Windows 7 deployment project. He is responsible for the creation of the base image and has worked diligently with Paul Pedron to create and manage bundles. Ken receives most of all the 1,000 Ken receives most of all the 1,000 PCs for the Windows 7 Project, infrastructure upgrades, and other upgrades needed throughout the city's department. Ken has shown leadership and being a willing resource for the deployment of technical staff whenever issues have come up, as well as being known as a go-to person for help to solve difficult problems. Ken is being honored for always being willing to go the extra mile. We're going to move on to the Parks Department. I know. And we're going to start out with a duo of Dennis Ferguson and Steve Norris, if you could both come up. The team of Steve Norris and Dennis Ferguson have really shown off their copperjack skill over the past few months. The roofs of all of the Woodward Park restrooms were in need of repairs and replacement, and they worked closely with the contractor to keep the project moving smoothly. Steve and Dennis used their organizational skills to get help for the project completed in a timely manner. They took the initiative on this project and the work was completed without disrupting the public during the busy summer months. They were able to troubleshoot issues that arose while keeping a can-do attitude to get the job done. Steve and Dennis are great examples of what the Parks Plan Maintenance Staff is all about. Next, from the Parks Department is Wendy Moon. For the past six months, Wendy has been an important part of the Children's Day Camp held at Woodward Park. Wendy is a hard worker who loves what she does and constantly goes above and beyond to get the job done. Her passion is to work with the youth and provide them with meaningful programs. Each morning, she greets the parents and campers with a smile and answers questions they have. She then organizes 50 kids into groups to begin activities of the day. She exhibits great leadership skills when giving campers direction as to where to go and what they will be doing. Wendy makes her job look easy and is dependable, productive, and solves problems on her own. Parents of the campers are very complimentary of Wendy. In their own evaluation and will often single out Wendy as being wonderful to their children, the Parks Department congratulates Wendy on her selection of Employee of the Quarter. We're going to move on to the Personnel Services Department, and we'd like to honor Marvin Seals. Marvin has taken ownership of his day-to-day duties. He is detail-oriented, attentive, efficient, and enthusiastic. Recently, he was assigned to complete a significant reconciliation project and other work in response to the annual request for external auditors while performing his regular daily assignments. He exhibited his strong ethic by completing the work on time and keeping his supervisor apprised of his progress throughout. Additionally, his coworkers have recognized him for his positive attitude and professionalism. We are pleased to have Marvin as part of our team. We're going to move on to the Police Department now, and we're going to start with John Gomez. Detective Gomez has been a domestic violence unit detective for the past seven years and is acting sergeant in the absence of the sergeant. John continues to lead by example in his investigative position by conducting thorough investigations, follow-up on assigned cases, leading to multiple convictions in court. John has currently investigated more than 400 domestic violence cases this year, which have led to 200-plus arrests. John provides domestic violence training throughout the year to law enforcement agencies, college students, high school students, and cultural groups within the City of Fresno. For these reasons, Detective John Gomez is our selection for Employee of the Quarter. Next, we'd like to honor Detective Dan Longoria. Detective Longoria has been a member of the Fresno Police Department since August 1998. His first assignment with the department was Uniform Patrol in the Southwest District. Dan was promoted to the Central District Crime Suppression Team, DCST, when he excelled in investigating complicated and involved incidents. Dan's thorough investigative skills and performance in DCTS led to his assignment in the Central District Detective Unit as a robbery detective. Dan has attended numerous training courses involving vehicle crime investigations and an advanced detective course. He is in the process of pursuing his bachelor's degree in criminology. Please join us in congratulating Detective Longoria for his hard work and dedication. Next, we'd like to honor Officer Mike Stanford. Mike Stanford has been a police officer for the Fresno Police Department, protecting our city and citizens for the past 13 years. Assigned to the Traffic Bureau in 2003, Mike immediately volunteered for our city's child-passenger safety efforts at the Fresno Police Department. In 2003, Mike completed the week-long Child Safety Passenger Technician Course and puts his expertise to use daily. Whenever a safety seat checkup event is scheduled, he does not hesitate to volunteer his day off and assist our agency and coalition. Mike's dedication to go above and beyond led him to the position of Senior Checker at our scheduled events. This was a unanimous nomination by all CPS instructors in our area who had worked with Mike in the past. We're going to move on to the Public Works Department, and we'd like to start off by Las Garza is an irrigation specialist. I do it every time. I say irritation specialist. Irrigation specialist is a great example of an employee who serves the City of Fresno with excellent pride. His coworkers agree that he is an exceptional employee to work with, gets the job done every time, and shares his technical and professional expertise with all involved. In addition, Las has been a valuable member of the Public Works team and has received several compliments due to his helpfulness and professionalism. He constantly demonstrates an exceptional commitment to the Department of Public Works and the City of Fresno through his unrivaled work ethic, positive attitude, and his concern for others. Also, from the Public Works Department is Tony Garcia. Mr. Garcia is a traffic maintenance lead worker in the streets maintenance paint and sign shop. He has an excellent attitude and work ethic. He takes on all special projects without complaint and finishes assignments in a timely manner. He was recently promoted to lead worker and is in charge of the thermoplastic crew. He maintains a high level of production and is eager to learn about new technologies and techniques. Great job, Tony. Next, we'd like to recognize Jill Gormley. Jill is being nominated as a Public Work Employee of the Quarter. Jill demonstrates the pride qualities that we look for in our Employee of the Quarter. Jill has recently stepped up to take on additional responsibilities and never hesitates to jump in and help. Jill has taken a lead role for the Public Works on several key city initiatives, including the general plan update, Fulton Corridor specific plan, and Bus Rapid Transit. Jill works quietly without a lot of recognition, but is a very integral component in the Traffic and Engineering Service Division. And last but not least, from Public Works, we'd like to recognize Kristy Kelly. Kristy has been a faithful and dedicated employee of the City of Fresno for a good many years. During that time, she has served in various capacities within many of our departments. In January 2011, she accepted assignment with the Public Works Construction Management Division, where thankfully she continues to serve today. Kristy consistently exhibits her trademark, "yes, we can" attitude, and is our greatest advocate for keeping the division's team spirit alive, particularly when times become trying. She leads by an example, not showing away from rolling up her sleeves and getting her hands dirty when the circumstances require. And let's see, we're moving on to Transportation facts. And this is a foursome group that has performed outstandingly. So will the following people come up? Jane Hostletter, Deborah Jones, Maya O'Neil, and Maria Valesquez. Maya, Deborah, Jane, and Maria are assigned to the Manchester Transit Center and are being recognized for their phenomenal teamwork. They handle over 10,000 customer transactions and phone calls each month, and they do this with a smile, excellent attendance, and great teamwork. Last fiscal year, they processed more than $1 million in payment with such accuracy that their sales and payments were 99.98% balanced. These hard-working team members deserve appreciation and recognition for a job well-done, outstanding, tremendous work. Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming, especially family members who decided to attend and help recognize your family member. There is some refreshments out in the foyer, and you guys are welcome to that, and I hope you have a great day.
Thank you.
Yeah.[1314.58] Yeah.[115.07]
I wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, just wanted to say that I missed you all very much last week, a very little bit. I was at the Congressional Black Caucus in Washington DC, just really an awesome conference, a lot of networking, a lot of good contacts we made on behalf of the city of Fresno. Brought back a lot of ideas. I can tell you that I use this thing called Uber, and I got great ideas for parking. Where's our parking people? I'm gonna tell you, it's, you know, some of the things they're doing in parking, you know, in that city are, you know, pretty high-tech, pretty amazing, things that I think we can do here to really ramp up efficiency. So I just wanted to say that thank you guys for letting me go, Council President, and not making me stay here, but I had a good time. And also really wanted to just really thank Bruce and Yvonne for working together and getting that public information out on the website to constituents and making sure that folks can have easier access to reading what we're doing here. So, thank you. I know we made that suggestion some time ago, but I know you guys worked together to do that. Just wanted to make sure I said thank you to both of you guys.
Councilman Brand.
Last Sunday, I attended the Art of Living Cancer Foundation. It was a presentation at Fresno State. A lot of people there, a great event, and in the near future, there's going to be an event item coming to the City Council regarding the part of Woodward Park, the northeast corner, that'll accommodate this Art of Living Cancer Foundation that gets artists involved with people in cancer treatment. It's really a great program, so I look forward to bringing that to the council in a few months.
Councilman Jean.
City Mayor, I just want to thank you for the staff with the general plan, although I wasn't there, had some other stuff, but the report came back that we had a good crowd and staff did a really good job. So, just some positive response. We appreciate that, especially in the district over there. So I just want to make sure the staff knows.
Okay, thank you.
Screen is clear. I would just like to also add, similar to what Councilman Jean just said, that I appreciate the city holding the water meetings in the upcoming round of water discussions, so that our citizens, the ones that are interested, have opportunities to interact with the city and understand the plan. So I do appreciate that as well. All right, the screen is clear. We're on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
No changes.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve?
Seven.
And a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. And on to today's consent calendar. Let's see. We are going to go out to the public and see if any members of the public would like to address any of the items on today's consent calendar. If so, now's a good time. All right, if not, back up to council, or, excuse me, City Attorney Doug Sloan.
Yes, Council President. One change I'd like to read that's proposed for the Barrett Contract, item 1F. Instead of saying a finder's fee in an amount equal to 3.5%, the proposed change is a finder's fee not to exceed 3.5%. There's a chance it could be negotiated to be less.
What item was that?
Item 1F, the Barrett Contract.
Okay, and it's not to exceed?
Right.
Okay. Councilman Brand.
I'd like to pull item 1F.
We'll pull it for discussion. All right then, with the exception of item 1F, do I have a motion to approve today's consent calendar? And a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. And now on to contested consent, which is item 1F, pulled by Councilman Brand. Councilman Brand?
Yes, thank you. The reason I pulled this is because this issue has really been going on since 1987. I think probably six different councils have dealt with the stadium. And we have a vested interest to the city of Fresno. Regardless of what your position is on the stadium, it's a major asset to the city that we have to protect. And we've had, you know, the last, back in 2009, we had engaged a Mr. Barrett to help the city determine market lease rents and help us renegotiate our contract. And back at that point in time, I believe the city had spent about $150,000, and all that money was billed to the Fresno Baseball Club that paid our fee. And the city now, the past three or four years, really, almost from the inception, but particularly the last three or four years, has had difficulty getting the money for the team. So when the team struggles, the city struggles. We're not collecting the money. So it's in our best interest to take an active role in trying to find a buyer, because I think the success of that stadium, which I believe is absolutely essential to the, not only to the downtown, but to the city of Fresno, is going to be based on finding a strong, well-qualified buyer. And at that end, I think Mr. Barrett has a great network. He's well-respected within baseball circles to find hopefully the right fit for the city of Fresno. And again, in the end, this money will be credited against, George Anne, could you come up just to verify it? If I got this right, any money that's billed out, let's say $100,000 over whatever period of time, in the end, that'll be credited against the commission, is that correct?
Yes, ultimately, you know, the city will be paying the bills, but will be reimbursed, excuse me, will be reimbursed, either directly from the Grizzlies through those sale proceeds or out of the finder's fee that Barrett Sports Group receives. So we will be reimbursed for what we put out.
Right. And if Mr. Barrett is successful, which I hope he is, the city of Fresno has the final right of approval on any deal, correct?
Yeah, the current lease amendment does allow the city approval of a new buyer if the, you know, the Grizzlies find a new buyer. And we can't, the way their lease is written, we can't unreasonably withhold our approval, but we do have approval rights.
Okay. And if we find that buyer and it's successful, there's an escrow, and in the end, the entire amount of money paid for both consulting and the commission will be paid for the proceeds of the team, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it will not ultimately come from the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, I would like to make a motion. Will you approve this item?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Now we're on to general admin items, starting with item 2A, approve a requirements contract with elite maintenance. That's from our Public Works Department.
Good morning, Council President, members of council. Erin Geary, Public Works Department. The item before you is requirements contract seeking your approval for monthly landscape maintenance services in the amount of $585,162 to elite maintenance and tree service. The professional maintenance service will cover CFD and LMD landscape maintenance in selected areas of the northeast, northwest, and southeast areas of town. These landscapes are typically tree and shrub only, which typically requires trimming, debris removal, and clearance trimming. Does not include turf. Currently, the CFD levels right now are at a 60-day maintenance service interval. LMDs are at 120-day service interval. With the approval today, all landscapes in the CFDs will go down to a 30-day service interval, and in the LMDs, down to a 60-day service interval. Excuse me. The contract shall be in effect for five years. At the end of the five years, it's at the city's discretion to extend three one-year increments. Just want to make you aware that all CFD, excuse me, and LMD landscapes are not included in this contract. Those that are not included will stay with city forces, therefore, no city positions will be lost as part of this award of the contract. Just noted that this RFP, when it went out to bid, did not include the prevailing wage requirement. During the bidding process, the Attorney's Office advised us to include this requirement, which we have. Just to let you know, it did not increase the service level or the price. The price would stay the same as it did as the initial bid. So with that, approving the recommendation and here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. We'll go out to the public real quick and see if there's any members of the public that would like to address this item. All right then, screen is clear. Any council members? You have a motion to approve? And a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Thanks, Eric. Now we're on to item 2B, approve a state of California lead poisoning prevention program agreement in the amount of $436,470.
Good morning. Jennifer Clark, Director Development Resource Management. A few weeks ago, we introduced this item to council and were asked to provide additional information. So we are back today to do that and to review and refresh where we started. So, as you recall, the CLIP program, or California Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program, is awarded to counties through the California Department of Health in an effort to prevent future lead poisoning, but is predominantly targeted at households where children have already been identified as having lead poisoning. We partner with the county to provide the service within the city of Fresno, and those particular cases are identified and presented to the city. The main purpose for years has been education and outreach and prevention and testing. However, recently, the program rules have allowed us to add remediation. So again, the Fresno County Department of Health identifies children with lead poisoning that have been identified by their primary care provider or a hospital or through a referral. They forward the potential participants to the city, and the city then conducts the lead testing. We have two programs that allow us to address lead poisoning in the city. One is the CLIP program specifically for those that have been identified by the county or in areas where the county believes that we have a preponderance of cases and could potentially have additional cases if those are not prevented. And we also have the Federal Lead Hazard Reduction Grant through the Office of Healthy Homes from the federal government. Those can be used citywide or not required to be in households where children have already been identified with lead poisoning, but can just be in houses where hazardous lead is present and that the child, there is a child present under the age of six. That can be a child who is visiting, if they're there as, if it is a childcare center, home childcare center, it's with grandparents. We just have to prove that there's a child under six there a certain period of time each week. So how does the county identify what are the areas of highest risk? And these are generally identified by two items. One is areas where the housing has been built prior to 1978, and then those that are built prior to 1939, which is where we have the highest preponderance of lead cases within the city. Additionally, then they layer over income information from census tracts to identify where we have the highest preponderance of risk for lead cases. The areas in blue are the areas that were annexed to the city prior to 1949, and while this doesn't give you exactly when structures were constructed, it generally gives you an idea. These are areas that have the highest risk of lead poisoning cases. And when we get to the numbers in a minute by zip code, you will see that they really have the highest number of cases that are identified to us as well. So the areas in the light pink were annexed, and the medium pink were annexed prior to the lead no longer being an additive to paint. And so those also have a high preponderance. That includes Fresno State and the airport. But there are some areas in pink that are outside downtown that have a preponderance of lead. So in our last meeting, we really talked strictly about the CLIP program, the Childhood Lead Prevention Program, and what cases had been identified in the two previous program years. This is the combined project, because we really use the two programs together to make sure that we address the highest number of households within the city. Over the last six years, we've identified and have remediated 200 units with lead that have children under the age of six. A portion of these are those where the child was identified as having lead poisoning. But as I said earlier, that remediation from the CLIP program just began recently. There were specific changes at the end of 2011 to improve coordination and to improve our outreach to clients based on some concerns that were raised, as well as new programmatic rules. So in addition to logging and entering all of the applications and mailing out applications to individuals, we offer assistance for the application, because it does require a significant amount of paperwork. And so applicants can receive assistance over the phone, they can make appointments to come in, or we will go out and actually make a visit to the home to assist potential applicants in getting their paperwork completed. And then we continue to follow up for up to a year, depending on the status of the applicant and whether or not they could potentially qualify. Again, the four identified zip codes by the county are those highlighted in the darker green on the screen, and they represent about 62% of the cases that we see and that we have been able to remediate in the community. The breakdown by council district in funding is about the same as the breakdown in the number of cases. A little over a third are in District Three, a little over, less than a third are in District Seven, about 15% are in District Five, and about 10% are in District One, with the smallest number in District Four outside of Districts Two and Six, which have no cases that we have addressed at this point. So looking forward, the application is for a three-year cycle. This is the next three-year cycle to the state. The CLIP program, again, would be administered in cooperation with the county. It's a little over $400,000, and we anticipate breaking that down evenly over the three years. The next round for the federal program has not been offered yet. We anticipate that the request for proposals will come later this fall. The NOFA will come out sometime before December. We will make that application. We anticipate concluding our current programmatic year and finishing up those lead cases with the federal program by the end of June of next year, just in time to start the new program. And we continue to look for cases. If there are specific instances that the council has identified, if you have a particular renter or property owner that you believe would be interested in participating, we would be happy to go out and meet with them and do specific outreach in districts. We can handle about six to eight cases of actual remediation per month. We like to have about two to three times that in terms of applications that we're processing, because the thresholds are pretty high to have both lead and a child and meet certain income guidelines. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If you have specific questions about policies and procedures, I have staff here as well.
Are there any members of the public that would like to address this program, this issue today? All right, back up at council. Councilman Baines.
Thank you, Council President. And I just wanted to thank my colleagues for allowing this item to go a couple of weeks. I remember the last time we talked about this, give me an opportunity to chat with the department director as well as the city manager and get, try to get my questions answered and my concerns alleviated. And with that said, I want to thank Jennifer for the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago. We certainly got a better understanding, I think, of what my concerns were. And I certainly appreciate this new, this PowerPoint that gave us some more insight. And I know that the last couple of days, we've gone back and forth, even still answering some questions through via email. And with that said, I'm not going to ask for any more time on this item, and I'm gonna be supportive today of this item. But it comes with some caveats, because, and I shared this with my colleagues last couple of weeks ago, and I also shared it with Jennifer and Bruce. You know, the last time we had a grant similar to this, we just didn't execute it well. And what concerns me is that we actually execute and get the resources into the hands of the community that matter the most. And that's what I want to make sure happens here. Obviously, these are good grants. They're for the right reasons and right purpose. I know that we have bureaucratic hurdles that we have to get over in order to execute, but I expect that we do that, despite the hurdles. So I know the paperwork is long, and I know there are a lot of checkboxes, but I expect us to execute. And so I'm obviously going to be following this grant pretty closely, as well the other one, to make sure that we fully expend what we had of the previous grant, because my understanding that we still have money left over. And we haven't yet expended that, which raised me the concern with this in the first place, if you all remember. So I'm gonna be supportive today with those caveats that I am assured, and from Jennifer and Bruce, obviously, you guys know what my concerns are about outcomes and expectations and execution, to make sure that we execute both grants effectively and appropriately. And finally, I want to, I appreciate that, you know, you sent me a very good email, really alleviating the final concerns I had. But what I would remind you is that I need that in the staff report, because the issue for us as representatives here is, our communities read these staff reports, and the staff reports are as much for them as they are for us. And so while I have a lot more information contained in an email and even some more information here contained in the slide, we need to make sure we are representatives of communities and we ask questions really on their behalf. So I really wanted the extra time, as we met, to make sure that that information was included in the staff report, so that when people in my community read it, they know that we have addressed the problems to their satisfaction as well, not just my own. So I will make sure I relay that to my community. But in the future, if, when we're asking, we have this banter back and forth, we want to make sure that we get it in the staff report, so the public knows that we put it off for a reason, and we addressed it, and it's included, and the public has an opportunity to review it, too. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman Baines, so if I remember when we first heard this a couple of weeks ago, in the previous round of this grant application, you'd had a group of citizens that had submitted a request to be a part of that and receive these services. They kind of somehow, it didn't happen for them.
Right.
And are you satisfied now as to what happened, or?
No, I'm not at all satisfied as to what happened. But, but I'm satisfied that I think that I brought it to the department director's attention, because in her defense, she wasn't here when that happened.
Right.
And that we're gonna be working together to make sure that the outreach and the policies and execution happens much better this time, because what happened last time is wholly unacceptable for any community, not just my own. But I believe that we've met, we talked, we've exchanged emails, same with the city manager, and there have been some assurances made going forward that that won't happen again.
Okay.
And so I'm comfortable with that.
Right.
Not at all comfortable with what happened before. There really is no explanation.
But going forward?
But going forward.
Right, okay.
And you know, I don't want to hold up, you all know me well enough to know that I'm not here to be an obstructionist and hold things up. I want us to move forward. I want communities to benefit from this. All of our communities, for the most part, benefit from this grant, so I don't want to, I don't want to hold it up. But I do want to make sure that we execute.
Perfect, thank you. Councilman Quintero.
Jennifer, in terms of the process in identifying the properties that they're gonna work on, so if somebody calls your office, do you refer them to the Fresno County Health Department? Or does Fresno County contact you and say, "We received a phone call"?
So on the CLIP program, these cases are generally identified by the County Department of Health. They have expanded that to allow us to take people who come and who call us and say, "Hey, we believe we have lead in our home," and then we can address it either with the state-led program or the federal-led program. So we do accept phone calls of individuals who are interested. We also identify cases through code enforcement efforts. If we see a house that has peeling paint or children under the age of six, we also look at those as a potential case that could be identified through the program. But predominantly, the cases for CLIP are provided to us through the Department of Health, because that's their priority, is addressing children who already have lead poisoning.
Okay, so neither the county nor the city is really being proactive in going out to properties or neighborhoods and saying, "If you're interested, this is what we have." We kind of take the position of like the Maytag Man, we just wait until they call us?
We have done some proactive outreach with some results that haven't been so positive, as explained by Councilmember Baines earlier. We raised a lot of expectations, weren't able to deliver on those promises. So going forward, the new program will include an outreach that allows us to go to specific targeted neighborhoods and identify specific cases that we can process, and only identify enough cases to get them in the queue to be able to process them, excuse me, rather than having 60 or 70 applications that either don't qualify or we can't get through in the time period.
Well, it would seem to me if you, especially in the older parts of the city, like Member Baines's district and District Five, if you just did like a mass mailer into one specific neighborhood, it would seem that you'd get a bigger, a nicer result in one particular area, and you can, and it makes the work less, well, it's more timely to get the work done, because you just pick up your stuff and go to the next house. And you do, you know, doing it that way. And I know in the past, when there's been grants that have had some good funding for outreach, that we've been able to put them in our utilities envelope to inform folks about it.
Those are all really great ideas, and we will definitely take those into consideration as we move forward to ensure that we're hitting those neighborhoods with the highest preponderance of lead, yeah.
Okay. Well, if you could, if, you know, well, when you get started, if you can call our office, I can identify the neighborhoods in District Five for you. And if we just get them off by squares, pick them off by squares, it'll be really good, because a lot of those homes, you know, people, families that have lived there 30 or 40 years, and maybe the child doesn't live there, but the grandchild is there with the grandparents and spending a lot of time at that house. So I don't know if they would fit the criteria or be eligible, but I know we've got a lot of that as well. So, especially in these economic times, so, okay.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Councilman Capriolio.
Oh, you hit it by mistake. All right. Jennifer, I just, I, just listening to Councilman Quintero, that, his concerns seem pretty valid to me, you know, get in a certain area and knock it out. That sounds like a real great way to go through that process. I just wanted to add that.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. Thanks, Jennifer. Now we are on to item 2C, actions pertaining to an annual appropriation resolution for the High-Speed Rail Station Area Master Plan.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Wilma Kwan Scheckter, Deputy City Manager. I just have a few points that I'd like to go over this morning on the item before you, and then I'll be available to answer any questions. On July 31st, council authorized DARM to enter into a contract with AECOM for services related to the High-Speed Rail Stationary Master Plan. On that same date, the related budget amendment did not receive the sufficient votes so that we could fulfill our financial obligations under that contract. We now have an executed agreement with AECOM with no clear path how to fulfill that financial obligation. As detailed in your staff report, we have two funding sources to prepare the Stationary Master Plan, the general fund or grant monies from the High-Speed Rail Authority. We recommend that council adopt the AAR before you today, which would allow us to reappropriate the grant revenues that council previously accepted, fulfilling our obligations set forth in the AECOM contract, thus not impacting the general fund. I would like to reiterate that the Stationary Plan is intended to provide a list of strategies and recommendations to help spur reinvestment on key properties within our urban core. This information will be valuable, pardon me, to the city with or without the High-Speed Rail Station. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Wilma. We're gonna go out to the public first, and a couple of people have turned in cards that would like to speak on this issue, so we'll start with that would like to speak on this issue, so we'll start with them and then open it up to anybody else after that. So the first one is Anna Lovelace. Hi, Anna, yeah, just introduce yourself and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, council members. Thank you for having me here. My name is Anna Lovelace. I'm a student at the University of California at Merced and I am here on behalf of the I Will Ride Group at UC Merced and I'm here to support high-speed rail because I see the potential that the Central Valley has and as a student at the University of California, I and my fellow students seek a community. And because the Central Valley is the connection between Northern California and Southern California, I feel like high-speed rail is the answer to really creating that community and connecting those two and creating a greater economy because the economy in California is the sixth largest economy in the world. And by using high-speed rail, we have so much more potential for the Central Valley. And so I definitely am in support of high-speed rail along with my fellow students. Thank you.
Cool, thanks, Anna. After Anna is Shoshana? I might have that wrong. Is that right? Okay, cool, thanks.
Hello, city council members. My name is Shoshana Matic and I'm also a student at UC Merced. I concur with my previous speaker as far as the economic aspect of the potential for high-speed rail, but also job creation here in the Central Valley. We're in a drought, there's a lot of things going on and Fresno has this opportunity to be this hub of activity and to be this place that, you know, everyone wants to come to and ride through in this, this great opportunity. And as the first speaker said, this is a commitment that's already been made, but the financial means hasn't been supported. So I really urge you guys to consider making that financial support to high-speed rail and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Shoshana. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item? Yes. Leanne.
I'm Leanne Eager, President and CEO of the Economic Development Corporation. And actually, I wanted to address it from not necessarily a high-speed rail issue, but from a planning issue. As you all know, it's my job to bring in new business to Fresno County and the city of Fresno. Any planning that you can do that helps me so that I can take that out and say, "Here's what's going to be happening in this downtown area. Here's what we need in order to support that area." That certainly helps in my job. Obviously, around the state, around the country, around the world, they know that we're looking at high-speed rail here in Fresno. They know that we're looking at a station in downtown. They want to know what we're doing in order to support businesses down there. So I think this is really important for all of us in our planning going forward in making sure that we bring in the right businesses, that we plan accordingly in order to ensure that we don't just do this haphazardly. Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right, Councilman Baines.
And I won't make, you know, I won't make any, any long comments because I think we, we've discussed this issue, but I just, again, wanted to encourage my colleagues to accept, accept the funding so the general fund doesn't really have to support the planning that, that we've already voted, you know, we've already decided to do the planning, so I would encourage us to accept the funding source. That's, I think that's the most responsible action today. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve and Councilman Quintero seconded that motion. Councilman Brand.
To get clear, and I think it's for the record that I have issues with the financing and the overall high-speed rail position in, in California, serious, serious concerns, but now we're looking at a local application. And I want to get something clear because in the, I know the, the last time we looked at, we, we discussed this, it wasn't clear, but for the city manager, this is a million-dollar grant from the federal state sources, correct?
That is correct.
And if, if we don't accept this grant, will this burden fall on the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, so I should make that clear because I wasn't certain in the past, so there is no doubt that if we don't take this money, it will have to come out of general fund.
That's correct. The, the, the funding that was being provided to us in a lot of ways is going to complement or augment work that's already been done. The Fulton specific plan talked about this area, but in very broad, very high level. This work will include a number of things and I will ask you to refer to page two of your staff report in which this report will provide a real estate development strategy, economic opportunity analysis, and infrastructure and financing plan for the area within a half-mile of the station. So even if the station isn't built, this is information that we're going to need, the infrastructure plan, for example. Public utilities cannot plan for the future at the expense of the infrastructure or the sizing of the infrastructure without this kind of analysis. And the same thing goes to the, the real estate development strategy. We have a lot of RDA property, for example, and a lot of other property right now that decisions that we make today could have an impact on whether that is even a viable project or projects in the future. We believe that this funding, while it is federal funds, is stuff that, or, or analysis that we are going to have to perform in the future to complement again what we're doing in downtown and work already performed. So I would encourage council again to, to support staff's recommendation and approve the item.
And so this is going to cover traffic circulation, the impact on local businesses. I'm sure really by proximity, the, the impact on the baseball stadium, the impact, the convention center, the Fulton Mall, all those salient, you know, locations within downtown Fresno. And if we decide to return, return the money, then this is a million dollars that would come from streets, fire, police potentially.
Well, again, as I said, there, there are things that we need to do to further augment and complement the work already performed. Again, for example, with the Fulton specific plan, how do we best leverage those properties from, from a market standpoint?
Right.
And then based on that analysis, what is the improvements in, in infrastructure that would need to be funded in order to support those investments? We already know we have infrastructure that needs to be replaced, but we also know that in some places, the infrastructure may not be adequate or large enough to support future development.
Right. Really, you know, this is the question about, you know, when you get these funding, and I, I don't believe there's a blanket, you always have to take it because there are times in my six years here that there is money out there that I think really serves no purpose. And, or there's times, the best example I can think of would be Hotel Fresno where there was something that would not be used fully and ultimately result in a financial setback. But I don't see, at least I, I see a very useful purpose for the money, whether you're for or against high-speed rail as far as downtown planning and really fulfilling the needs of the city of Fresno. And it's always weighing, for me, it's a struggle, could weigh in your personal philosophy against what's your role, that you were elected to be, to represent the people and to do what's, in the end, what's best for the city of Fresno and its citizens. And even if high-speed rail never materializes, this will not go to waste. All this planning would be there in advantage and really a savings to the city down the future. So it's a difficult decision, but in the end, for me, it's, it's, it's what benefits the citizens of Fresno, what does, as opposed to what aligns closely with my philosophy. So I've got to take a pragmatic approach in this deal and I will support it because I believe it makes common sense and I don't necessarily make a, again, clearly no endorsement of high-speed rail, but for the people of Fresno, it's clearly this is an advantage and I think would be foolish to, to not accept the money. Thank you.
You know, Member Brand, I'm glad that you asked those questions to, to clarify that this is not about the debate of high-speed rail, where our political positions are. This is about making sure that, that we're, as elected, are proactive in terms of going after money, whether we agree to a certain point where it comes from or not, that that is one of the basis of what we do as electeds. And we do this every single day in terms of tax money, tax revenues, going to make sure that we provide the best opportunity for the city and it affects us all across the board, from public safety to infrastructure, to growth, to planning. You look at, at our budget and just about every single area is impacted by some form of state or federal funds. That gives us that opportunity to either pre-plan or provide direct services. So to me, this, this is not about that high-speed political debate that we have differences of opinions on, but it is about us knowing that it's coming, but also making sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do to prepare our city, not just for that, but the growth that we plan and its impact for our residents. So I, I just want to make sure that, that I, I support those lines of questioning that you raise and, and clarify, but at the end of the day, as I've always said, I haven't heard a correct answer yet, but if somebody's got to tell me that there is a city out there that does not receive sometimes a federal, state grant and everything's sustainable, then please let me know because every city in, in the country here receives something so that we as a city can provide the type of services pre-planning for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I agree with my colleagues' comments and statements and I, I think you need to put your personal philosophy aside and think of the greater good for the community of Fresno. But I wanted to put on the record that the vast number of citizens in D4 do not support high-speed rail. My own research reveals that high-speed rail is an imposition by the government, that's the state and the federal government, and the only way that we can get by this situation is through the courts. It's currently in the courts and I think that's the court of last resort on this particular issue. So with that in mind, it also amazes me how the national and state government think they know what's best for our community. And I stress "our" community. And they impose their alleged wisdom on us and what that means to me is rules, regulations, obstacles, instead of assisting and letting us determine our own fate with our tax dollars. And with respect to tax dollars, I've had some constituents bring that up and ask about it. And so I, I want to thank Mike Lima who provided me with some information here. For the sales tax dollars that are collected, 87% of that goes to the state. The city of Fresno gets 10%, 10% out of every dollar of tax from the sales tax. With regard to property taxes, 45% of that goes to school districts and the city of Fresno gets 21%. So those seem to be pretty amazing statistics to me and we have very limited resources to work with and then you throw the obstacles on top of that. It makes it difficult for us as a city to fulfill the needs and desires of our, our community, but we, we do that, we do it as best we can. And then, of course, federal tax and state tax, that goes to DC and Sacramento and who knows where that goes really. But I just wanted to also bring up that as a city leader, my duties include protecting those tax dollars as limited as they are. And that means keeping our tax dollars in this community. It also means that we have to bring back tax dollars to this community. And here, we have over a million dollars on the table that will be brought back to our community. If it doesn't go here, it goes to perhaps Merced or Burbank and we lose that particular financial commitment that we desperately need. So with all that in mind, I want to keep it here in Fresno. I want to protect, most importantly, our general fund dollars and so I'd be supporting the motion today.
Is anybody from High Speed Rail Authority in the room today? Any representatives of C? No, okay. Interesting. Well, maybe one of our college students might be interested in answering a couple of questions. I don't know if anybody can answer these questions. How many, how much money is in High Speed Rail Authority's bank account today? Do, anybody? We don't know. Nobody knows. They'll say a number, somebody else will say a number. Are they selling bonds? I don't know if they're going to sell bonds in the state of California. I think they've got freedom to sell them now. They do have freedom to sell them now? Leanne, have they sold any bonds yet? They can't sell them until the spring. We should wait until the spring and see if this project is going to have any money to fund operations like we're doing today. So we're going to pre-spend money. I think even our college students from Merced can understand this. We're going to pre-spend money that's not necessarily in the bank account. And so, you know, we're being asked up here, even our staff report takes a little hit at, at council members being philosophical, but I actually believe we're, we're voted into office to be philosophical. We are being asked to represent the views and thoughts of our community. If it wasn't for that, I don't think we'd need a city council members up here. We could just, a bureaucracy could always tell us what to do and somebody like the mayor could stamp with a big, heavy stamp every, every bureaucratic decision. So here's the situation. I hear what Councilman Brand is saying. I hear what Councilman Capriolio is saying, that, that we should just take the money because it's there to take. And I believe in taking money for the right, for the right causes. About a week ago, our public's work department came in and had a meet, a meeting with me and they were so excited to show me a plan for paving some streets in District Two. And I think every different council district is getting the same amount of money to pave streets in, in their district. Seven districts, I think we all get $360,000. In District Two, that paves about one small neighborhood. We found a nice neighborhood and I'm really happy that that neighborhood's going to get new streets. Unfortunately, almost every street in District Two needs to be repaved and that, and this one of our newest sections of town. I believe in taking money, guys. I do believe, Councilman Jong, in taking money, but I think we should take money for the things that we absolutely need that money for today. And taking money for a high-speed rail project that has some concerns as to whether it's going to be able to advance and fund its own budget or not is irresponsible to me, even as a Fresno city councilman, knowing that we need money for planning in downtown Fresno. So for those reasons, I still have difficulty with this project. I would much prefer to wait until maybe even the spring when High Speed Rail Authority can show me that the state of California legislature is going to vote to sell bonds for this project. I'm, I'm still hesitant to see if that's going to happen. And if they do, it's just be an ongoing selling of bonds. We're going to, we've got a couple of bond measures on the ballot in November. Be interested to see on if those bond measures pass. So for, for, for me, as a small business owner, I still like to feel that I operate within the framework of understanding a budget and I don't see the budget here. Now, so I'll be opposing, I'll be opposing this consistently with the way I've been. Until I see a budget, I have a real difficult time spending money prior to knowing what that budget looks like. So I will stay consistent and be voting against this today. Councilman Olivier.
Thank you, Council President. I also will be voting no against this today. I'm not going to address this issue because I think that you just did a good job of that and my colleagues as well, but I just wanted to, to, to kind of speak to an argument that's been made. I've heard three times today respectfully, with all due respect to my council colleagues, I've heard three times today, almost verbatim, the quote, "You need to put your personal philosophy aside here." That somehow the noble thing to do is to put your personal philosophy aside, put what you believe in on the shelf and say that there's something wrong with electeds who don't sell out their principles. Well, I, I reject that argument as being preposterous and I will be voting no and consistently down the line will be voting no on this project until we see the, the bond money come in and, and the oodles of private investment that we've been promised on this project. But I don't, I don't, I reject the argument that, that our function here is to put our personal philosophies aside in order for, to accomplish things that... aside in order for, to accomplish things that are, you believe, to be pragmatic. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Baines.
It's that line from The Godfather, or just when I thought they were out, they pulled me back in. So I just wanted to just respond to a couple of things that I heard. And, you know, we have a healthy disagreement on this issue with a few of my colleagues on there, and I certainly appreciate that and really do, at a very high level, understand where you're coming from. But I did want to just remind, you know, people that are listening, and to some degree even, my colleagues, that, you know, the voters approved high-speed rail. So I don't think that we should forget that, you know, we're not taking an anti-position to the will of the people. The voters of this state approved high-speed rail. And if I'm correct, the voters of this county approved high-speed rail. Now, I can't go to the particular council districts, you know, back in 2008 when it happened, but I'm not exactly sure that we're not doing exactly what we're elected to do. We have constituencies that we represent, and the very first one, we represent the city of Fresno. And although we advocate for our individual districts, and I think that that's what we're elected to do, to make sure that the individual wills of our districts are represented, the bottom line, we are elected by this city to be good stewards of their wishes. And so in a very real sense, we are asked every day to put personal philosophies aside to vote, because we're really not here representing personal philosophies. We're really here representing people that elected us. And so I think sometimes that while I don't certainly agree with everything, and you all know we have good philosophical debates, I think we always have to return to, we're actually elected to represent people's values, not just our own. And voters did vote this in by a majority of the folks. Depending on what you believe in polls right now, there are different opinions, but it hasn't been voted on. What we have right now is a vote by this state that says they desire high-speed rail. And we are elected, and we represent the will of voters. So I don't think that that should be forgotten. And I don't think it's at all a sellout if we're representing the wills of our voters. There are times when, quite frankly, my constituents in District 3, you know, have some ideas that I don't always agree with, but I can tell you that I do my best to represent their interests even when they're contrary to my own. And, you know, to my friend, my council president, my philosophical ideological debate buddy, you know, we do oftentimes spend dollars that we don't have yet. You know, that's how we pay bills every month in the city of Fresno. You know, we are always, so to speak, on the come. So I don't think this is anything different than we do, you know, pretty much every week. And the planning dollars that we have aren't just for high-speed rail. They're for planning for this city. They're planning for downtown, who we're leveraging tremendous state, federal, and county dollars in. You know, so while we, part of it is being funded by high-speed rail, the larger issue is much bigger than high-speed rail for this city, which, to me, makes it okay, whether you agree with high-speed rail or not. So what we're really doing is, we have an amenity in downtown that we want to see get better. We are accepting some dollars to help that process along for this city. Our city will benefit from that. So, you know, I think the philosophical debate about high-speed rail is valid. I really do. I think that it, listen, while I may be on the other side of it, while I agree, it's not like there's a, it's not like there isn't a decent debate that can be had about it. But I think when we bring this issue home local to us, electeds that have no bearing on what's going to happen with high-speed rail one way or the other, we can't vote to rescind it, we can't vote to, we have no jurisdiction at all. The last thing that we have to do is to do what we can to protect the interests of our city and not let high-speed rail happen to us without protecting our interests. So I think that, I know that you're going to vote no, and you're going to be consistent because I know you value that, and I do, I value that too. But I certainly wanted to make sure that, as the public listens to this debate, to take it up one step higher and kind of really understand, at least from my perspective, what we're really wrestling with and what we're really talking about. And I know there are a couple of guys that may vote to support this that aren't in support of high-speed rail. But I think that they, you know, rightfully so, have taken off their own personal philosophical hats and have put on the hats of, you know, representative electeds representing what's best for the city. So I just wanted to help my friends out who are coming over to the dark side.
Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm ready to vote.
All right. Councilman Brand.
I want to clarify, that's legitimate questions that our council president has asked on the funding. City manager of the million dollars coming, how much is from high-speed rail?
Two hundred grand, two hundred thousand.
So the other money is?
The other money is coming from the council of governments and from the federal rail administration.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
All right. You know, respond quickly, but I don't want to get the blah, blah, blah award today, so I'm going to try and make it real brief. I know what the vote up here is going to be, so we're just going to take that vote real momentarily. But I want to talk about, Councilman Baines, about this budget thing, because I do agree that we take money that isn't quite there yet. So I understand that. But I want to talk about the difference here. When we set our budget, when we all work really hard on a budget process about the middle of June and has to be accomplished by July 1st, and this council votes on that budget, when we pass that budget, we don't have that money at that minute. But we can see the source of that money, like Councilman Capriolio talked about, sales tax or property tax. We can guesstimate, we have professionals that tell us where that money's going to come in from, what month it will be here, and that's how we spend money, right? So that is a normal budgetary process, and I'm fine with spending money with, that you don't have in the bank during a budgetary process like that, because you have, like we have, a midterm review, or where you can review, are we on target? Has any of those numbers changed? That's all normal budgeting. And then also, at any given time, if somebody comes to council with a huge project, we'd have to vote on it to amend that budget. So there's checks and balances to that. That's not what, that's not the kind of spending that I'm talking about here. I'm talking about spending money in advance of a project that has a very sketchy track record of showing us how they're going to provide the money that we are supposed to spend. And whether it's two hundred thousand or a million dollars, I think, you know, it's, for me, for me anyway, it matters that this project's had a difficult time showing us how they're going to budget this process. I would much rather take this vote again in the spring, knowing that our state legislature is going to support this program that they've been talking a lot about for a long time. But anyway, that's the difference, right? So I don't want to take up a lot more time, because you and I can go out and have, yeah, we can do that even more later. But so for me, that's the difference of this type of budget. Okay. Councilman Olivier.
I just had a 30-second response to my colleague, Councilmember Baines, in that we need to keep charging ahead because the voters approved high-speed rail a number of years ago in a referendum. And I would submit to you that the voters also approved Proposition 8 in a referendum, but the voters got it wrong. They had it wrong about Proposition 8, and they had it wrong about high-speed rail, and time will tell. And so I reject the argument that we have to continue to push this forward, even if philosophically we don't approve of it, because sometimes they get it wrong. And they did on Prop 8, and they did on high-speed rail, so I will not take off my philosophical hat on this one. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Quintero, a minute ago you were ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote again.
All right. Well, we have a motion, and we have a second, and the screen is clear. All in favor? All opposed? Nay? Motion passes five to two with Councilman Olivier and Brandal voting no. All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for our two students that showed up today as well. Appreciate them. Let's see. Now we are on to the city council aspect of our agenda, which... Yes, thank you, Blom. All right. Actually, we're going to go to our 10:00 AM timed item, the scheduled council hearing in matters. This is a hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinance to annex territory and levy a special tax regarding city of Fresno Community District Number 11, Annexation 56. All right. So this is from our Public Works Department.
Good morning, Council President Brandal and members of the council. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. What we have before you today is a hearing to annex 10 parcels into our Community Facilities District. It's a maintenance district. We have received ballots from the owners of the property. There's only two owners of the property. They've both agreed that they would like to be annexed into the district. All of the reports are completed, and to complete the item, we just need to have the public hearing and then annex it into the district. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. I'll go out to the public really quick. Are there any members of the public? Yep. Come on forward, and just introduce yourself, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. I'm Christine Lienfelder, and I am here today as owner applicant. I have not processed a MAP at the city of Fresno or a CFD for a number of years. I've been in your neighboring cities, and I was very, very refreshed and welcome to deal with staff. There's so many people behind the scenes that have done a great job on this little project that I think will be a great additive to District 6, and I just wanted to thank staff. That's it.
Thank you, Christine.
Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item? All right, then, back up here at council. The screen is clear, actually. I guess we talked ourselves out on that last issue. Do I have a motion? What's that? It's D6?
Yes.
Okay. I'm D2. Okay. We have a motion, Councilman Brand, a motion to approve. Do I have a second? A second by Councilman Olivier. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Now we're going to move to the 10:10 timed item, Assign Ordinance Workshop, and that is from our Department of Planning.
Good morning. Jennifer Clark, Development and Resource Management. Just wanted to tee up this workshop. I promise it will be short, give you opportunity to discuss, have thoughts. This is really the beginning of a discussion of how signs are presented in our new development code. Signage is a very important topic and really addresses how we view our landscape locally, as well as how businesses get their message out. So this presentation is for information purposes only. There will not be any discussion or decisions made at this time. So really what we want to do today is talk about sign regulation in general, what is regulated, provide an overview of sign types, and it will be very brief, I promise, I won't go through every type of sign that exists, to introduce the code's purpose and our next steps, and perhaps a little bit of timeline. So we want to maximize each sign's ability to convey a message. We want businesses to be able to attract customers and consumers, we want them to be able to market their products. Even the Small Business Administration says that signage is one of the most important functions and one of the most important purchases that a business can make. Its on-premise signs serve six primary functions, as defined by the SBA, to develop brand equity, to aid in recall and reinforcement of other media advertising, to prompt a purchase, to change purchasing decisions once, or choice once, the customer is on the premise or in the building, to promote traffic safety by notifying motorists where they are in relation to where do they want to go, and to complement community aesthetic standards. So even the Small Business Administration recognizes that it's really critically important that not only businesses, but nonprofits, agencies, and cities have signage that identifies where you are, where you want to go, and how to get there safely. So what message do our signs convey? And I did not use, for the purpose of this presentation, any signs in Fresno. So if you're looking for signs in Fresno, this is the only one, and this is going to be painted downtown. So there are no other signs that are related to businesses in Fresno. So didn't want to get anybody in trouble, didn't want to start any issues. So again, looking back at those six purposes and primary functions of a sign, how does a sign meet those expectations? Do these signs meet the expectations of getting a customer where they want to go? Or these? Or this? Or this? Or even this? So while these are great attraction, they definitely meet one of the items, they get your attention, they get the consumer interested, do they get us where we really want to be long-term? So how do we define signs? There's really two main categories of signs. There's public, and there are private signs. Public signs predominantly are transportation-related, and that is not addressed in the sign code at all. That is addressed in the Public Works manual, so we're not going to address that at all in this conversation. But signs can serve public facilities, such as schools, parks, libraries, civic centers, convention centers. Signs also serve private businesses, subdivisions, nonprofit agencies, churches. Signs can be located on the premise, on the site where the business or the site is located, or they can be off-premise. On-premise signs are signs that are located on the building, signs that are on windows or awnings, signs that are directional in the parking lot, monuments or pole signs. And then off-premise, which would be billboard or temporary or mobile signs. So what do on-premise signs look like? There are wall and building signs, could be made up of cabinets, they can be channelized, letters, they can be simply form letters that have no lighting. If they have lighting, they can be backlit, frontlit, uplit. I said that for the purpose of Bruce, but he's not even here. He likes uplit. So windows and awnings. Window and awning signs can attract consumers, they can put off consumers, they can make it easy for the police to see into a business, to assist with crime prevention, and they can make it difficult. Directional signs. Directional signs can assist within parking lots, they can also be assistance in downtown areas or in shopping centers, where you want to find where you need to go in a very large campus. Even hospitals use directional signage on their campuses and within their buildings to allow you to find where you're trying to go. Basic monument or pole signs. Monument is simply a lower functioning sign, typically all one piece. And then a pole sign or a pylon sign is a sign on top of a long extended pole or a series of poles. So on-premise signs, once you break them down a little bit further, multi-tenant monument signs can actually be really tall. It's one piece, it includes many tenants who are part of a complex. This could be a shopping center, or it could be a school campus. Also, on-premise signs, it would be a pole or a pylon sign. Again, multi-tenant signs include not only the definition of the center, but also the types of businesses that are located in the center. There are also marquee signs, so identification of a shopping center, identification of a subdivision, identification of a campus. And architectural signs are... And architectural signs are typically considered art pieces, so they could be a large sculpture in front of a shopping center or a site. So some of the biggest changes that have come about since the last time our code was adopted are digital signs, LED signs, electronic reader boards and messaging centers. We allow specific types of electronic messaging centers in the city, ones that give us time, temperature, air quality, information. But there are more and more opportunities for businesses to capitalize on digital signs. And they are considered one of the best ways to reach a market for specific time periods. They can have different signage for different time of day if they're serving dinner versus serving lunch. They can have different signage on a campus if there's an upcoming event. So they actually can provide additional resources to the consumer and to the public. However, they do have greater concerns for traffic. They have greater concerns for neighboring uses because of the light and because of the distraction that they can create. And today, there are even bigger signs. Probably one of the biggest, most popular signs right now are really very large outdoor TV screens that can do many things. They have the opportunity to play movies, they have the opportunity to have lots of action on the screen. And so I think it's very important that as we talk about our sign code, we really think about how moving signs and moving images impact traffic, impact safety, and impact surrounding uses. And so that will be very important for us to consider as we go forward to understand what is the impact. These can also be extremely large. The two that are shown here are 94 on the left and 60 feet tall, so anywhere from a four to six or seven story building is the height of the sign. So you can imagine the size of the television screen and the impact that could have on surrounding uses. So, and in some cases, large markets that attract a lot of pedestrians. Times Square in New York City has a full screen on a building. The Aria in Las Vegas has a full curved screen on a building. Those are not the types of things that I anticipate seeing here, but we certainly need to understand that the... Well, it could be. Could be. But we need to understand the impact that that could have on surrounding uses and we need to have that considered in the code. So additionally, some consideration needs to be made for location of billboard signs. Billboards tend to be off-premise signs. It's very rare you see a billboard on the premise of the business that's advertising on it or the consumer is looking for a specific place to get off the highway, to look for a restaurant or for gas or for a hotel. We have some signage on some of our freeways, 99, none on 41. It's considered a scenic freeway and a landscape freeway in the Caltrans guide and so we do not have this kind of signage on 41. But we need to consider how that impacts not only our freeways but existing city streets like Blackstone and Shaw that still have a significant number of billboards on them and how do we regulate those as we move forward? And then probably the one that I get the most calls and questions about are really off-premise or on-public right-of-way temporary signs. So if you're in a... If you're walking along Kings Canyon and you want to have... Go to a restaurant, you like having the sandwich board out there in the sidewalk so you can see what the menu items are for the day. Great way to attract pedestrian customers, not so great for the drivers along the right-of-way. Signs, temporary signs that are not real estate-related or not political signs for political marketing, but just businesses advertising their wares on someone else's property or across town to try and get people across to their business. The newest rave is... Are the flippers or those who flip signs in the right-of-way and who could cause distractions to drivers. So how are those regulated? They aren't regulated in our code right now at all. And then, of course, temporary banner signs. How do you make sure that those are erected safely? Don't distract drivers, don't impede the view of surrounding businesses, to allow people to be able to see where it is that they're going. And even grand opening signs. So how do grand opening packages with all the banners and the balloons and that kind of thing, how do they impact business as well as impact the driver and the surrounding uses? So again, as I said, this is a very introductory primer. Really, we're trying to assist the public in getting where they want to go. We're trying to enhance the business climate by allowing businesses and the city and nonprofits and local agencies to show where they are, what services that they provide, to increase safety and circulation, improve visual impact, and protect surrounding uses. So what are the next steps? We are in the process of drafting our sign regulations in the development code. We would encourage the council to provide us with feedback on specific concerns that they have about signage that they would like for us to address in that code. We anticipate coming back before the Planning Commission with additional workshops on concepts on signs. Again, signs are probably one of the most discussed elements of a development code of any regulation because they really do impact everyday business for residents, consumers, businesses, and public entities. And then, of course, during those workshops and during those conversations, we will seek input from the public. So really, this was just an introduction. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we had talked a few months ago about having a basic sign workshop. What does the sign code regulate? And so hopefully that was a good, brief introduction.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you, Jennifer. We'll go out to the... Oh, no, we don't go out to the public on a workshop. That's mostly for council, just to get a general understanding on any issue. But we can have council make comments or ask questions. And Councilman Jeong, you're up first.
Thank you, Jennifer. City manager, I remember us discussing sign, I think it was like my second year or my first year on council, and that's about seven years ago. So I'm glad that we're kind of coming back full circle now. And I'm assuming that we're going to try to seriously address this particular issue because not only are we getting a constant bombardment from all the entities involved but, you know, residents as well in terms of its impact, in terms of where they live and how the quality of life issues. And so, you know, when you were talking about the public, I guess, seeking public input, that's also including our, I guess, the many chambers that we have, not only with the Fresno area but our Hispanic or Latino chambers to our African-American chambers and so forth will be part of that discussion. What I'm... It says there the timeframe to come back this fall with all the extensive outreach and input that I figure you're going to be getting. I'm not sure if that's... Seems like a pretty aggressive timeframe.
We'd like to incorporate it into the development code. It has been a standalone chapter. So the development code allows for signage in specific zoning classifications in our current zoning code, but there's a standalone, separate sign chapter that really talks about how that is implemented. We would really like to roll the sign code into the development code to make it a more uniform document so that there's one place that people can look to find the regulations that they need. It's very hard even as staff to identify where certain regulations exist, what's allowed, what's not allowed, how big, how tall, based on different zones. So we do intend to outreach not only to the chambers of commerce but also business associations along specific right-of-ways that have been identified and to get their input along with residents and homeowners and property owners in the city to understand where their concerns are. I do anticipate that that could potentially get pulled out of the development code and be addressed in the spring as a separate item to amend the development code moving forward because it is a longer process and I don't want to hold up the development code because signs could take a long time to discuss.
Yeah. And also, I mean, when we've dealt with the sign too, there's always... That been constant as well is the budget side for, you know, staffing to really... Even it's a challenge now to implement or enforce the current code that we have and even with some of the gray areas. And that would be an interesting, just the financial side of how do we... Where we go through all this stuff, where in that in terms of the finances to support what we're trying to do. It's great that we, you know, we create policies up here, but the challenge is always, okay, how do we enforce those policies? I've seen many policies that we've created and now there's still policies without the mechanism, financial mechanism to put the bodies there to do that. And maybe that's a really realistic discussion somewhere in the sign and says that this is what it would take and this is what type of commitment they would make for us to even meet the minimum. We're not talking about, you know, top level, we're just saying minimum enforcement of this would be kind of the minimum that we would need in terms of financial resources to be able to follow through what we want with this complicated signage issues that we have here for a large city that we have with... As you... I mean, you've only shown those examples that we have and those are just some of the examples, not even all the examples of the creative creativity of our signage that we see every single day. So good luck to the group that's going to be going on. I'm pretty sure it's going to be very engaging and this will probably, in terms of the overall code, this will probably be one of the more interesting discussions that will happen, at least from my perspective, from the community side and the public side input to see where staff move. So thank you very much for this introduction.
Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Jennifer. Good presentation. I want to talk a little bit about the signs and I want to go back to some great signs that we used to have and the present and the future, I guess. And they probably wouldn't be in compliance now for the ones in the past. There was a restaurant on Old Highway 99. The guy wasn't doing too good and he... But he served good food. His name was Rocky Bruce and it was called Bruce's Lodge. And so he bought an old airplane and put it on the roof like it crashed on the roof, just like that. And unfortunately, the building caught fire years later.
That would be considered an architectural sign.
Well, I don't know how he got the county to approve it, but I mean, it looked good. And so it was out there by Fowler, between Fowler and Selma, I believe it was. But if you look that one up, it's a great-looking sign and it was an actual-sized plane as well. So I guess that one, we couldn't get in compliance here in the city, but that was... Those are some good signs. Also, there's a big G on top of the Guaranty Building downtown and that one used to tell you the weather because as the weather changed, the color on the neon changed. So you knew what the weather was going to be that day. So I believe the G's still up there, but it's not really working and there had been talk some time about getting the two parties together and moving the G over where the spaghetti factory used to be over here on Ventura so the vehicles coming in on 41 could see it and get it to work. And that was actually a great sign. A lot of people would connect with that sign. And then I want to talk a little bit... And then we also had the... Some of the current signage that we have now and basically, I guess, the thought is, what can be done to get them fixed up or have the property owner come into compliance? And one of the good landmarks that we have is the old Dale Brothers coffee can over here on... Is it Broadway, I believe, or H Street? It's on top of the building. It's a huge coffee can, but the thing is, all the paint on it has been peeled and it's sat there for years and just hasn't, you know... It was a beautiful sight in the old days. But that's something that you have there that a lot of people coming in... Here's the picture of the airplane.
Thank you.
You can show that one. If you show the...
Thank you. Oh, that's great.
You know, somehow worked to... The pictures are the old movie theater signage, like the old Hardee's Theater here on Van Ness. The marquee's gone, but it's changed over the years. But one of the big ones too, where we have a lot of people coming into town and especially with the high-speed rail being built, is a beautiful signage of the Crest Theater that I don't know if we have anything within code enforcement ordinances that could have them spruce that sign up because, I mean, those are just beautiful old signs that would be attractive to folks coming in on the high-speed rail as well as off of 99. And then I believe the last signage that we approved before the ordinance was changed for freeway and highway signage was the Richards Restaurant over here at 180 in Belmont. And I think that was the last one that we approved for actual signage off of freeway. And we're talking now about 168 for Granite Park. And I don't know if we couldn't bring some of that back. And of course now, folks are looking, businesses are looking more at digital signs. And I want to thank you in the city manager's office too. I know you're working with Fresno Distributing and they had called me even though their business isn't in the district, but they live in District Five and it's old family friends and that type of thing. How would you be able to maybe see if there's some way that they can be helped? Their business, of course, Fresno Distributing, is in an older area of town and when I looked at what they had, they, you know, it would seem that it would help the little corridor there on McKinley. And they have a similar sign in Los Cadas because they have a business over there and I'm sure their ordinances and restrictions over there are a lot tighter than ours here. But is there something in what you're proposing that might be helpful?
Absolutely. So we have spoken with Fresno Distributing and we will continue to work with them to ensure that we're meeting their expectations as well as preserving the neighborhood around their business. But typically, communities are allowing digital signs and LED signs as a portion of an overall sign so that it's not taking up the entire sign unless it's in specific locations that are distributed throughout the city rather than very large, like the movie signs that we were showing earlier. So absolutely, those are ones that we're working toward. We're trying to make sure that we're getting that information out in a way that works for the business as well as works for the traffic and the neighboring properties.
Okay. Because I didn't... Someone had told me sometime, well, you know, if you... Folks go ahead and really kind of approve it to the extreme, the corridor's going to look like Las Vegas. And so what do you think that's going to make Ventura and Kings Canyon look like? And I said, "I love it." You know, that'll really help the businesses and just, I think it would create a lot of good attractions and help the existing businesses on that older corridor. But I know you're not going to want to go to that extreme, I guess. But there is something in there in what you explain, it sounds like, that'll be helpful for them?
It is an avenue that we want to consider, we need to consider. It is definitely part of signage to have informational, small message centers as part of an overall sign. So it's certainly something that we will consider as we move forward with sign ordinances.
And city manager, they... I know you're smiling, you knew that. I know you've been working with them as well and trying to help them out. Is there any resolution to that or...
And I will... Um, and, and I will probably be news to Jennifer, but Jennifer's been busy doing general plan meetings and everything else, but I can tell you as of yesterday, um, the sign was permitted.
It was what?
Permitted.
Permit?
You got the green light.
Oh, okay.
So, we're done.
It's been permitted.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, thank Jennifer and Mike for moving that one forward. She's just, she, we've been spending a lot of time trying to figure out whether it's a five-foot driveway, eight-foot driveway, or no driveway, and general plans and everything else. So, and making sure that we're also got, uh, our HUD-funded projects or programs in compliance. So, all due respect to Jennifer. Sorry for, she just found out, so I'm sorry.
I didn't know how far along in the process it was.
They told me to ask you all those questions so they could say that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Let you say everything. But no, thank you for working with them. I, I appreciate it. They're an old Fresno business and, uh, helped a lot in the community as well. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Jennifer, on the signs, I have a couple of questions. Screen is clear, so, um, uh, let's see. For starters, uh, Councilman Quintero brought up one thing that I'm interested in, is signs that need some sprucing up. He used the phrase sprucing up. Now, when we enter in, so when a business, uh, yeah, so there's a contract that goes on. We're allowing that, you know, they're, they're being allowed to advertise their business and in return, I think, you know, we should have some minimal standards on whether their sign, you know, is, passes muster with the city of Fresno because their sign, if it falls into disrepair, you know, it sends a, another message to citizens beyond their customers. It sends a message to our whole city and also, um, people that are looking to invest in our city. So, I, for me, signs is really a valuable subject matter and I'm, I'm interested in what my other council members think about signs throughout the city. But, right now, do we have standards on some of these signs that, um, kind of fall into disrepair? What do we do when, when there's a sign that's not that attractive or appealing?
Um, so, signs that no longer meet our standards, if, um, they are abandoned, if they're dangerous, um, we can address that with code enforcement. Um, typically, that isn't as, as high of a priority, um, because of, uh, other high priority health and safety issues that we address with code enforcement. But as Councilmember Jean mentioned, it, it is a prior, it is an important task and it really needs to be financially addressed. Is there, are there specific, uh, things that we need to be doing to make sure that we're keeping on top of existing signage? Um, we do require permits for new signs, for, um, changes to signs. So, typically, that will allow us to get in and make sure that it's now still structurally sound. Uh, is it painted? Is it well maintained? Uh, but businesses that are abandoned, uh, how do we address those signs? Just like abandoned buildings are, are very important as well because it, somebody might want to go to that restaurant and find out once they got there that it's no longer there. So, um, it's, it's important for us to be addressing those as well. Um, but it will require additional, uh, resources if we're going to focus directly on maintenance and upkeep of signs as well as CUPs and permits for billboards.
I know when, um, a couple of times in this last year, um, I thinking of a couple in particular, when law enforcement, the police department wanted, department wanted to deal with a certain problem, they would go out and hit it real hard for a couple of months to kind of get the message around, like, uh, when it came to the use of shopping carts. So, maybe, maybe hypothetically, we could, uh, do that same thing with code enforcement, once we make some decisions on signs. You know, it's just kind of a brief, hit it hard so that the city and mostly our business owners understand, you know, what we expect on their part of the bargain. On the super temporary signs, the, the people standing out on the corner, moving the sign around and...
Twirling signs?
Okay. On those, on those signs, um, so what, you know, what are the requirements on those signs? Does that, is that something we accept?
It's, it's not, uh, permitted in our code, but it is not prohibited in the code. So, but it's in the public right-of-way. So, the, the challenge is ensuring that we're, we're dealing with the safety of, of the drivers, but there's been no, um, massive, uh, effort to go out and to tell people, gee, you can't do that. Um, so, one business sees another business doing it, so...
Yeah.
They're, they're going to...
Real popular now.
...follow suit. Absolutely.
Okay. And then on super temporary signs, maybe it's not even a business that stays up, you know, but super temporary, and, uh, what are, what are we allowed? Do we allow people to tack on signs on, um, on telephone poles and other utility poles and stuff like that?
No. Those, those are not permitted. So, um, we do allow some temporary garage sale signs. They need to be on private property. So, you need to ask your neighbor on the corner, "Can I put a sign here that says, 'Direct someone down to my garage sale.'" But signs, uh, we buy ugly houses, we clean credit, those kinds of things that proliferate on sign poles and on public utility poles, uh, are very hard to manage and really take a, a direct effort of someone going out and taking them down on a regular basis, just like you said, on a, uh, to go out and hit it hard, make sure that they all come down. No, those are not directly regulated. I have experienced in the past with, um, attempting to get rid of those signs, especially because there's no identifier for an individual, uh, a business, uh, a location, an owner. Um, and, uh, we've used, uh, robo-calling software to reach out to those companies and say, you know, "We're gonna keep calling you until you remove those signs or you come in and you address those issues." Um, but it, it does take a lot of manpower to get out and to take those down and to ensure that, that's public, um, poles, public signs, signals, uh, don't have, uh, those kinds of temporary signs. Um, there are other kinds of temporary signs, um, big mattress blowout and it'll be all up and down, uh, in a right-of-way. In a median, there will be 10, 20, 30, 40 signs all in a row and they may be right in front of their competitor's location. So, um, it's important that we address those kinds of temporary signs as well. A lot of temporary signage, I think some of you have, have experience with this, um, goes up at 5:00, comes down at 8:00 AM, go, you know, is, is up on the weekends and that's why we're, uh, starting to roll out weekend code enforcement to ensure that we can address those issues as well as, as other issues.
And so, in District Two, if I pull over in my truck and remove a couple of these temporary signs on utility poles, are you okay with that? Are you gonna be mad at me?
The owner will be mad.
Well, and one of there's one...
I'm okay with you. But there, you know, depending on the pole, on the sign, the way it's attached, um, removing it may damage the pole itself. So, it really, some, some signs...
Duck tape, usually.
Duck tape, usually it's okay.
I'm talking about signs that are not that attractive...
Right.
That are super temporary. There, it's not even necessarily for a business, that gets on a utility pole and it stays up there for a long time.
Right.
You know, I just, I'd like to see some, I'd like to hear what our other councilmen...
I've been known to stop and do that as well.
Okay, okay, good. That's, that's the kind of sign I'm talking about. Now, then, so as you gave your presentation, there's a number diff, of different motives for people to put up signs. And, and, and really, when I hear them, they're all valid, you know, but some of them are competing, right? So, some people, well, they wanna advertise, but then really if you, then they will just plaster their whole business with every type of temporary sign. You can't see in, you can't see out. I've heard interesting comments from law enforcement about that type of thing. So, that you get this competitive, uh, theory about signs, right? Um, so, can't, does, our goal is to create a citywide policy?
Correct.
Okay. Within districts of the city, could we have different policies that would allow different, the different motivations for signs to be stressed in different areas of town?
Right. There needs to be a citywide, uh, sign code and a citywide sign policy. Um, there can be specific sign character districts, whether it's on Kings Canyon, along Fulton Street, River Park, Manchester. They may have a special sign character district as a zoning overlay. So, the, the property owners on that, uh, in that area that own businesses would agree to a zoning or would come and, and have a conversation with the council about a zoning overlay that will allow specific types of signs, either allow or forbid specific types of signs. Um, there, there are ways to allow super temporary signs for specific reasons. Maybe once a year for an annual sale, maybe for a grand opening package that gets the excitement and the interest and, and that's when you have a lot of the non-conforming or typically illegal signs, like the wind-blown Gumby's, um, that, that attract customers. But maybe you say, "You can have that for 28 days" so that people know that you're now open, but then you take it all down. Um, or there could be a row of auto dealers that all want to get together and they wanna have a flag on every pole and they wanna have pendants everywhere. And you say, "This is an auto character overlay district and here's the zoning that allows this kind of signage." Um, so, what I would say is, yes, you can create different sign districts, uh, but not related to political districts within the city, that, that there's a citywide base sign code.
Okay. All right. Well, uh, you know, I've, I've listened to my fellow councilmen over the years talk about different sign-related problems. I don't necessarily see all of those different problems in District Two, but the goal of today is that you want to get input from council on signs, 'cause we need to do something about signs. It's, it's been a, a long time coming, right?
It's been a number of years since we last updated the sign code. Councilmember Jean was discussing that, um, and that was an update, but it's, it hasn't been overhauled in, in a long time. And so, we really need to start with what, what is the current conditions of today? How do we meet the needs of, um, those who put up the signs, those who want to view the signs? I know as I get older, I, I, when I was younger, I wanted everything to be the little monument signs and now as I get older, I can't see them. And so, I want a bigger sign so that I can see what I'm going to... So, I, I, we really need to balance the needs of not only the, the businesses or the property owners, but also the consumers as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we've got some other council members up now. So, Councilman Caprioli.
Uh, thank you. I, I think a more specific, uh, issue, at least in my district, are the, you know, depending on the season, but we are in the political season and judicial races as well. And we see those signs, uh, again, like Councilmember Brandau had indicated, that are taped to obviously unpermitted or unpermissioned locations. Uh, knowing who, who the candidate is on the sign, is there a way to communicate with them to come and take your sign down and, and follow the rules?
There, there are specific rules related to political signage, but if they are on a city, um, poll or a PG&E poll, uh, they can be contacted to remove those signs, yes.
And if it's, uh, sometimes you see a for-sale sign or, or, um, sort of a generic situation and that sign is taped to it, uh, are we allowed to call that candidate and say, "Please, show us verification that you have permission" or, 'cause it's pretty obvious to me and a lot of them are up like 13, 14 feet, so you can't reach them. So, it's one group in particular that does this type of illegal signage. But is there a way to enforce that or how would?
Right. Anything that is on a public poll is not, is not a permitted sign.
Can Steve take those down too?
Yes, he can stand on the bed of the truck.
He has, he has the truck to do that, so. Well, I'd just like to see that addressed sometime, uh, in your, uh, workshop or in your final proposal, that there's a more effective way to, to, uh, stop that. 'Cause I think it's really, I get a lot of calls on that and it's, uh, and well-founded calls, I might add. So, to enforce that, it'd be excellent, at least for D4. Thank you.
Councilman Quintero.
Forgot one of the last great signs was downtown Fresno was Harts Restaurant, H-A-R-T-S. Looked that one up. Probably be out of compliance today too, but it was one of the, the elegant signs in downtown. It was very good. Uh, Jennifer, the other part too, there was some concern a while back and I know that, uh, your office has worked with them as well as the city attorney's office, is the convenience store owners, uh, the, it's an association where they had a, a big concern over some of the convenience stores, uh, putting out, uh, beer on sale out on the landscaping area. And, uh, they were able to do that because they got a little bit better deal from the distributor and the other ones didn't. Uh, but anyway, they waited, knowing that code was not working on weekends, they would wait after 5:00 on Friday, put them out and, uh, bombard their, their landscape area. It's, um...
So, that absolutely will be addressed, but the Convenience Store Owners Association is a group that we need to ensure is included in these conversations so that they know what's coming. They're able to enforce within their own membership, uh, what those rules are. But yes, right now, uh, we can cite and we can remove, um, those temporary signs.
Well, they enforce it within their own membership, but it's the ones that aren't members that...
Right.
Are, are not in compliance. So, okay, so you're working toward getting that?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Brand.
You know, to what, um, Long said earlier, I came in 2009 and the first thing we talked about was a sign ordinance. So, it does take its time at City Hall. You know, I know it firsthand from, in business of, you know, like in the apartment business where you put the banners out, the sidewalk signs, and everybody's trying to get a competitive agent, uh, competitive edge. And I know in the past, that kind of the policy was driven by complaint. So, we'd have like, on one side of the street, our complex, that the competitor would complain about. The code enforcement guy would come out and cite us. I'd say, "What about the guy across the street?" Well, nobody called on him. So, I hope that policy's been changed on how you do that.
So, uh, on complaints, if someone calls, whether it's a sign ordinance or, or a sign complaint or high weeds or trash, uh, when code goes out, they look not only at that property, but also at the surrounding properties. Um, and that cuts down on some of that a little bit. Um, but I know Councilmember Olivier has had some, some really big competing interests, you know, who can be bigger and better than the other. And then they call and complain on the other business.
Was that Massage Parlor's?
So, we're, we're, we've cited all. And so, you know, it's, it's citations for everyone. But, um, what we're, we're trying to accomplish, instead of citations, is to ensure that the businesses can put up the signage that they want, that they need, that meets the expectations of the community, uh, and makes it, it easy for all of us to, to go through our daily trips.
You know, in certain areas like downtown, are they thinking about different standards as far as trying to find something, you know, visually that, you know, brings out people? I know they, what's his name? Bill Manders always talks about his neon signs, but really, if you go down 41 and you look at like, you drive by the, um, Manchester Cinema, you know, the neon signs and even, uh, River Park, they really do stand out. You know, I, I don't know what the cost is, but, uh, I know it, it, if you wanna make an impression, it certainly makes an impression by, uh, by doing that. And I think that's something we should look into. I think it has a legitimate merit to it. And, um, it's like we did on the convention center, um, a few weeks ago, a few months ago, about the signage. I think the city attorney confirmed that we'd exempted the city from electronic signs, but that's something we need to explore in the future. And it's always a balance between, you know, what is a legitimate business trying to get their message out there versus what is a, um, there's some cities out there, and Las Vegas comes to mind, where you just have this overwhelming sense of that, you know, it, it becomes a nuisance, it becomes a distraction. And I, in fact, aren't there regulations on the signs along like Highway 41 and 99? You can't have it too distracting to drivers?
Right. There, there are specific, especially with digital signs, there are specific federal highway regulations, um, that regulate the speed at which, uh, a sign face changes, um, the duration of each message, um, whether or not there's motion in the signs, uh, how bright the signs are, specific colors are all regulated. Um, and those are definitely items that we need in the code. We want each sign to have the most impact for that particular business. As you said, the, the proliferation of signs will detract from individual businesses. Um, and absolutely, there needs to be, uh, a sense of scale. How does, uh, a large, a large center like a Manchester Center, uh, attract business? Because there are many tenants, it's a very large site. It needs to have a different kind of signage, um, than, uh, than a small, uh, individual store based on the size and the scale of the property.
Right.
Definitely downtown right now has specific code, uh, sign code regulations. And, uh, as, uh, Council President Brandau mentioned, there, there is an opportunity to have different cut, types of regulations or different types of, of, uh, sign districts for different types of properties.
Right. I could see like the Tower District downtown, specific areas, River Park, where you have maybe different standards. But I think that the underlying theme has gotta be equitable, that e- each respective business is treated the same. Nobody has a competitive advantage over somebody else. 'Cause I think in the past, that's been a lot of the... Because I think in the past, that's been a lot of the case, or at least claims for the case, so I hope... What is the timeline on the code? When's that coming out?
The Development Code is anticipated to come out later in October for public review prior to the general plan and the Development Code coming back to the Planning Commission and the Council for adoption.
So within the Development Code, all the stuff we're talking about will be out there in a draft form for us to get...
Yes, yes. But we do want to do some proactive conversations with business associations, with chambers of commerce, with neighborhood associations to ensure that we're really understanding and meeting the needs of the community before we put a draft code out that's going to upset some or make others concerned, so...
Can you mention like one-time promotions? If there's a big event, somebody can maybe apply for, it doesn't have to be a CUP, but the permit to have a one-time, say we're going to have a parade downtown or something in the district, so we can do that, have the ability to let... Most of those are nonprofits, too, to have the ability to raise money, get their message out without, you know, public safety concerns or simply being a nuisance, right?
Absolutely. That's a really great opportunity to reach out, not only to nonprofits, but businesses for annual sales or grand openings.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer.
And City Attorney Doug Sloan.
Well, I was going to say that, as you can guess, with sign issues, there are a lot of First Amendment issues, equal protection issues, state and federal law. If you would like, we can get you a memo discussing what we can regulate and how we can go about it and so forth, if that would help.
Well, for sure, I think that would be important, to know what our groundwork is on that, so...
Will do.
All right. Jennifer, what is the next step, then? What do you need from us, or are you guys going to work on something and then present it to us, or...
We are still in the drafting form. If you have additional comments, I've written down what's been said so far. We'll go back to staff, we'll consider these items, see how we can incorporate them, talk to the chambers, the different business owner associations, and then anticipate releasing the draft code as a part of the draft code later in October for public consideration. We can come back and really drill down into those salient changes between what our existing code says and what we're proposing in the new sign code.
And if a member of the public wanted to be on this decision process, who would they engage in the city? I mean, I know you're already doing general plan meetings and water meetings, we can't really add at this time another set of public meetings, but if somebody wanted to come and express that, they could come to council offices, start there?
Certainly, they can come to you, they can come to my office, Mike Sanchez, Assistant Director for Development Services. We would be happy to take any of those comments, thoughts, come out and meet with the apartment association, the Realtors Association, understand what their needs are.
Perfect. Thanks, Jennifer. Great workshop.
Thank you.
Now we're on to the City Council section of the agenda, which is really reports from council boards and commissions. And so rather than read that long list, we'll now just... Oh. Unscheduled, Alfred. Yep, good. We'll do unscheduled in a second. Are there any members of council that would like to report on any of the boards or commissions that they serve on? Councilman Baines.
Yeah, just two quick updates for the Fresno County Zoo Authority I serve on. That board is an alternate for the mayor, and just wanted to really let council know that we're well underway with the Measure Z campaign. As you guys probably know, we are going to be breaking ground on the Africa exhibit next summer, I believe, or should be completed, rather, next summer, and things are looking really good. Attendance is, at this point, the attendance rates have doubled from where they were five years ago. We're approaching almost 700,000 people coming through the zoo a year. If you guys have not seen the zoo lately, I would definitely encourage you to go by. The Sea Lion Cove exhibit just won an award, as you guys know, you know, with, I don't remember the name of it, but it's the ones that zoos win. So they're really doing good stuff over at the zoo, and the Africa exhibit is probably going to be an award-winning exhibit as well. It's pretty awesome. We'll probably have one of the better zoos in the entire region in the western United States after this is done. So I think that the first Measure Z campaign produced a lot of results. Revenues and attendance is up really high, and I think this second campaign, you know, hopefully it's well-received by the public, they can see value for the dollars at work. I just wanted to give you guys an update on that, because I don't talk about it too often, because I'm just an alternate, but I've attended the last couple meetings, so I kind of have a perspective. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was my service on the air board. So you guys may have seen that recently we updated our wood burning rule, and if you didn't, I'll just give you very quick highlights. Obviously, there are really two things in the San Joaquin Valley that impact our air quality. Well, not two, not only two, but two big sources, and one of them, as you know, are mobile sources with our diesel trucks that come up and down 99, and the other one are really our wintertime, when people burn their wood burning fireplaces, very localized contaminants in areas, and the PM 2.5 contaminates really high during the winter. So over the last several years, we, you know, the air board has taken steps to really minimize that. So you guys hear wood burning days, when it's safe to burn, safe burn days or whatnot. Well, what we, that actually is a very, very strict regulation, and, you know, in some winters, people may only be able to burn out of entire winter season of, you know, 90 days or so, they may only be able to burn six or seven days. I mean, it's really, really quite restrictive. Obviously, we have a big problem with being an extreme non-attainment zone, so we take that approach. So what the air board decided to do was try to find ways where we could increase the ability to, for people to do, to wood burn, because that's important. People do, people, for some folks, being able to burn their fireplaces may be a source of, one of their only sources of heat. So what we wanted to do was find ways to extend the wood burning season for people that have wood fireplaces. So we started a grant program that will allow people to upgrade their wood, their wood burning devices to basically clean burning devices. So we wanted to, and as a side note, we also extended that if you have that wood burning device, now your number of burn days increases to somewhere around 74, 76 days, which means that somebody that has a fireplace can actually use it and burn wood, if you have a clean burning device, and we'll incentivize you getting that wood burning device up to $3,000 for, if you have a wood burning device and you want it to be cleaner and still be able to burn wood, we'll incentivize up to $3,000 for that. In some cases, for obviously low income, if you're within the income bracket of 2,000, the actual upgrade is about $2,900. So we think that for those people that really wanted to burn more, that it's, you know, will cover, you know, 70, you know, 70, 80% of the cost for most people, and in some cases, 100% of the cost if you're low income, and at the same time, increasing the number of days that you can burn wood. So it, clean, clean wood, clean burn, rather. So anyway, just wanted to give the council two updates. Lots been, lots been in news about those two issues, so just wanted to provide updates to you guys.
Councilman Brand.
I want to introduce a concept with Member Baines in a few weeks about council subcommittees working with school boards on a peer-to-peer basis. And I know there's been ad hoc meetings from different districts, but like in my district, District 6, most of it is actually Clovis Unified School District. And in Clovis Unified, I believe, covers my district, District 2, District 4, and Sal, your district, too, I believe, covers Clovis Schools. So there's a lot of, you know, cross-jurisdictional stuff and a lot of issues there, but I want to come back in more detail with Mr. Baines to discuss a, more of a formalized process for, really, the goal is to improve relations with these school districts, Fresno Unified, Central, all the ones local, that we work closer with these school districts on really cross-jurisdictional issues. Thank you.
All right, screen is clear. Councilman Brand. Interestingly enough, that we are reaching out to the other, the school districts that serve the city of Fresno, and we're going to be bringing in the different superintendents between now and the end of the year. We've got, yeah, one of them scheduled already. That'd be a great time to talk with them about all the different situations. So I wanted to mention on one of the boards that I sit on, we saw Leanne Agar here a few minutes ago, but the Economic Development Corporation, about three weeks or a month ago, sponsored a, or hosted a group from China that came through, Chinese investors, specifically, and Councilman Zhang, I think you were a part of that as well, and I got to go have dinner with this delegation, and they were, they are very interested in investing in the Central Valley, but specifically Fresno, so that was a really great time with them. We stressed a couple of the different things that Fresno's known for, but we also expressed to them we're open to a lot of ideas, and so it looks like there'll be an ongoing relationship with that delegation in the city of Fresno. I thought that was fantastic news. So, all right, the screen is clear for council, for these different boards and commissions, so we are done with that, and now we are into unscheduled communication. And Dave, you had turned in a card, and now's a good time to come up and talk for three minutes and introduce yourself, and we'll go to any other members of the public.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council. My name's Dave Herb. I am a volunteer liaison with the Democratic Central Committee, specifically tasked to work with city council. There is an issue that has come up regarding the conduct of public hearings that I've been trying to handle informally, and in conversations earlier today, it was suggested that I take advantage of the unscheduled communications portion of the agenda to make a statement on the record, and I'd like to do that at this point. Citizens who have not spent a lifetime watching councils and boards wade through their agendas may not be familiar with the protocols for the orderly handling of consent calendars, general administration, city council items, scheduled hearings, and unscheduled communications. However, from a citizen's perspective, it is intuitive that there are really only two kinds of agenda items. One, timed items, and two, untitled items. Please forgive the simplification, but the point is important. Scheduled hearings are usually scheduled in accordance with law as an important part of our democratic process to facilitate public input to what are often controversial issues. A timed item assures the public that an issue will not be considered prior to the appointed time, and I have never seen this rule violated. However, a timed item is also intended to ensure that the item will be discussed as soon as possible after the scheduled time. The current council occasionally seems to lose track of this principle, and I have received complaints about this point from our committee, and at least on one occasion, I have personally noticed a 2:00 PM, a 2:00 PM item slide until early evening. On a controversial item, this could result in a concerned citizen taking time off work to waste hours waiting to testify or being discouraged and going home. I have been asked to monitor this issue, and it is my hope that in coming months, I will be able to report back to our committee that Fresno does not have this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council today? All right, thank you. Yvonne, I believe that that's it. We don't have a closed session today, correct? Okay. All right, then, our council meeting is over for the day. Thank you very much.
Good job, Mr. President.